We have quorum, so I'm opening the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board Wednesday, June 5th, 2019, at the Quayle Meeting Room in Mashpee Town Hall at 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. This meeting is being televised and recorded. If you are making a presentation or a comment on a presentation, please use the microphone in the front of the room. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome the new members, John Phelan, Deputy Fire Chief of the Mashpee Fire Rescue, and Joseph Callahan.
Gentlemen.
Welcome aboard.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so I would like to make a motion that this board discuss, as outlined in the guidelines, the organizational of the committees, I mean, the organization of the department, department officers, I mean, the committee officers.
Well, I guess the problem is that, well, I guess we could say-
I'd just like to add to the agenda so we can discuss it.
Okay.
We have a vote on it, to put it on the agenda.
I need a second.
A second, ma'am?
You need to do by roll call vote.
A second?
Right. I don't understand, what do you want to do?
I'd like to make a motion that we discuss the committee officers.
Board officers.
Outlined in the guidebook that says on the first meeting.
The committee, you mean, the planning board?
The planning board.
The planning board, okay.
The planning board officers are supposed to be, we're supposed to have elections in the first meeting after the election.
Yeah.
Electing committee, your president.
You're talking about the officers of the board?
Yeah, the officers of the, the planning board. I'd just like to have a discussion about it.
Okay, we can discuss.
We can discuss.
Yeah.
I-
We can take a vote. I'd rather wait for Mary to come back.
Yes, well, that's what I was going to say.
So, no. We're taking a vote, and then there was a second, so I thought, no.
Okay.
Because Mary's not, I want the whole board to be here before we discuss anything. That's the only fair-
And I think that's the only fair thing, too, that Mary be here. And-
Well, I got a second, can we just discuss it for a second before we take a vote?
Well, we got to put it on the agenda, it's not even on the agenda.
Well, what I did was I requested it be on the agenda, he gave me a second, so it's up for discussion, and then after discussion, we chose not to vote on it.
We gotta, the vote now is, it should be on the agenda, and I vote no, and now it's up to Joe to vote.
I vote no.
So, now it's your turn to vote.
I vote yes.
And now it's your turn to vote.
I also vote yes.
Okay, so, now Bob can vote because Mary's out, so how do you vote?
I vote no.
Okay, so, we can put it on the agenda till our next meeting. Okay?
Okay.
No, because it has to be on the agenda.
I requested it to be on the agenda with Mary, and she didn't answer my emails.
Yeah, but-
Well, I didn't know anything about it.
Yeah, well-
It does say it in your guidelines, it says it in the guidelines, yeah, that we should discuss it.
It's just not fair, we just-
Well, other committees do it, I mean, it's a common practice, after the first election, after the election, at the first meeting to do it. The selectmen did it on Monday night with three members, they didn't want you to have all five there.
Well, we already voted on it, so now we move on.
Okay.
Okay, review and approval of the meeting minutes, May 15th, 2019. Do we have other people for the meeting?
Yep, we do. No, no, I don't need it, no.
That was absent, so.
But there's a, we don't have a, they were not at the meeting, so we'll just do this at the end.
Next agenda.
Okay. We'll schedule that for next week. New business, request of release of covenant dated May 3rd, 1972, recorded at the Bonsable Registry of Deeds in Book 1644, page 87, regarding Coonamet Highlands subdivision, 6 Balfour Lane.
Joe, if I may, in your packets, should be towards the top, you'll see the requests from an attorney, Connie Baker, she's not present this evening, for the release of Lot 9 on the listed definitive subdivision plan for Coonamet Highlands, it's in Fox Hill, the address is 6 Balfour Lane. This request came because the current property owner is interested in selling their property and in their attempt to transfer title, their title search turned up that the covenant, that this property is still subject to the covenant entered into by the developer back in 1972, which was curious, because the, this board, back in, I want to say, 2007, accepted a cash security for the completion of the roadway in the, from lot line to lot line in front of the house. So, that cash security should have replaced the covenant as its long-term performance guarantee, but the registry has no record of its recording. So, this request is to release that particular lot from the covenant, I provided in your packets the documentation that I had on record, Charlie's last report dated May 21, 2008, with some images, and I also had asked the chair if Charlie could go by this particular property to make an inspection to the board, so the request from my department on behalf of Connie Baker is to release Lot 9, 6 Balfour Lane, from the particular covenant, and if Charlie could speak to that topic.
I took a ride by there last Thursday, since I was in town for a couple of other things. There are pictures in your packet, that's about as it looks today, and you'll notice that there is, in the third, well, actually, you can see it in all the photographs, there's a portion of the asphalt that is much darker than the rest, that's a portion of the asphalt that the original developer put in next to Silverleaf. Silverleaf is not constructed, as you're probably aware, it's in terrible condition, but the purpose of the reconstruction of Balfour at that time for the release of Lot 9 is what we're discussing. The area in front of the particular lot that we're talking about is fine, the landscaping is fine there, the road is fine, the drainage is working, the bounds were put in according to my latest report, and I know there's only, what, a couple thousand dollars left in the security amount?
Yeah, so the security being held is for, I think, the original builder of this house, his name's Peter Hopple, the request isn't coming from him, because the property's actually transferred a couple of times since that construction, so the 2,000, there's $2,000 the treasurer's still holding for, as cash security, for, I think, the completion of the shoulder work that Charlie identifies in his 2008 report.
So, if that security remains in place, which it could for perhaps just a little cleanup of the intersection around that paving, you could still release the covenant, because the security takes care of whatever little work is left there, it's just a little bit of loam and seed. So, my recommendation would be that you could release that covenant for Lot 9, there's no reason to hold it.
Is the house pictured in this?
I believe so, yeah.
Which one is it?
It's the very first one you see.
That first one there on the left?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So, for purposes of that house, the roadway's constructed already?
Yeah, practice, and to my understanding, especially in Fox Hill, which was incomplete, to have your lot released so you could build your house, the interested party was responsible for completing the installation of utilities and the construction of the ways, according to the approved subdivision plan from lot line to lot line in front of their house.
It never got completed before a lot of these lots were sold out.
It was all piecemeal, we used to make them do it maybe 50 feet past their lot, just to have that much done there. We got a lot of it done, you know?
Oh, yeah. Over the years, there's been a lot of improvements there, and some of the roads were rebuilt, street bounding was done, loam and seed, shoulder work was done throughout the development, and Silverleaf is one of two or three pieces that are left in there that nobody's asked for a release on yet, so it remains as it is.
I make a motion, we release the covenant, what's it, $2,000?
So, you're releasing Lot Number, you'd be, the motion would be to release Lot Number 9 from the, Lot Number 9 shown on a plan entitled Coonamet Highlands subdivision plan of land in Mashpee, Mass., dated March 1st, 1972, from the covenant agreement dated May 3rd, 1972.
So be it.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have to sign.
It'll come down. So, you'll be signing, just your signature on the letter.
Doesn't matter where, huh?
Should be all filled out, Dennis.
Couldn't I have to get a, one signature in front of a note of, Evan?
I do, I talked about it with the clerk, we should be all set.
She said it was okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
You all set on that?
Yes, thank you, Joe.
Knockabout Beer Company, 2018, performance bond status update.
My apologies to Peter for not getting this correspondence before the board earlier, he made this request some time ago.
Good evening, folks, I'm Peter Murr with Knockabout Beer, I'm here, I'm here tonight to, to go through the process of seeing if you can release us from the landscape performance bond that we had in place, just to refresh your memory. When we opened last March, we had not completed all the exterior work on the patio that was planned, we had the, completed the building, all of the infrastructure to get our brewery up and running, and to create a small little patch of outdoor space that was already pretty much existing when we took over the property. We wanted to get through the summer to earn a little bit more capital so that we can invest in doing the project. I came back to you, folks, based on our last special permit modification, was that I was to come to work with Charlie and other members of the board at the time, to put together a plan that would be suitable to maintain the natural grades that were there as much as possible, while still achieving our goal of having some flat areas to have folks enjoy the outdoor nature and some of our beer. So, working with Charlie and Mr. Whedon at the time, we staked those areas out, worked to make sure that they worked with everyone's goals in mind. After that stakeout happened, we came back to the board with a grading plan that was presented, and that was accepted, and we moved forward with the work at that point. Then, late August, early September, we completed the work and moved forward with having that area open to the public, and when our performance bond came up for renewal earlier this year, we put in a request into Evan and the town planner's office to see if we could get that release without having to renew it, since the work was completed. I submitted then the letter, along with some photos, showing the work completed, and welcome any questions or comments. We're very proud of the work, we think it did exactly as all the groups had intended, as far as changing as little grading as possible, as far as what was naturally there with the hills, maintaining some of the beautiful beech trees that were there, and then still giving us the flat spaces that allowed our customers to enjoy the area and the small lot that we do have, allowing us to expand our opportunity to have customers enjoy a space out of our small taproom, which is only about 900 square feet. So, my request is, can you release us from the bond so I can not have to pay for it again this year?
I went up by there, it didn't look bad, it looked nice, you know, I thought you did a nice job, you know?
Thank you, appreciate that.
Pictures look very nice, huh?
I went by there myself, and one of the issues I had had to do with egress, and they addressed that as well, so I have no problems with what they've done.
Anybody else?
So, I make a motion, we release the bond?
Second.
How much is it?
So, the bond, so the bond is held by, it's a bond, a performance bond backed by an insurance company, that we have record of, that we could, that the board, if the, if Knockabout defaulted on their obligation to complete the patio according to the plan that you approved, you would have access to those funds to complete the work. So, what Peter's requesting is, do I need to renew that bond for an additional year so the board can, could take those funds as security?
Oh, all right.
So, if the work is complete, Peter will not, would need to submit a new performance bond to this body.
I would just get, basically, you guys telling us if it's good to go, then I'd get basically a letter from Evan saying that we were allowed to release it from the, the circuit.
Charlie, did you go out there?
I just drove through quickly tonight on my way here, but I really haven't had a chance to go and look at all of the construction, it looks like it's pretty nice.
Yeah.
So, it's, that's up to the board, if you want me to make an inspection, I'd be happy to do it.
Really, you went by?
I've been through, I went through it.
Satisfied with, that's what I'm concerned a lot of times, I ask-
Yeah, because I had, my only issue was egress, and they did a good job on the egress.
And the deputy was part of the plan review design process as well, that, again, stated that caveat, to make sure we did at the beginning.
I, too, also visited on a couple of occasions, and looked at the plans before going there, and to my satisfaction, things look complete. So, you think they're okay?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
So, I make a motion, we release the board, that you don't have to get one next year, it's done.
You need some sort of a letter or something from the board to him?
Um-
What do you think?
Maybe we need a letter, because you have to go send it to the insurance company, telling them-
Well, I'm wondering, just for the record, if there, should it be-
Should it be a motion just to tell you to go ahead and issue the letter?
To draft a letter, to the, to Mr. Murrner, identifying that the construction has been completed according to the plan, and that the board will not require the reissuance of the performance bond.
So, I have to resend that motion, or just add on to the one that I made?
Resend the motion and authorize me if, if that's, if that's amenable to the board to draft a letter and submit to Mr. Murrner.
I'm going to resend the letter, the motion that I made, and whatever Evan just said, draft the letter so that he can have the insurance company release the bond, and that he don't have to get another bond the following year.
Okay.
Yep, second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Good luck.
Sorry, that was a rough motion. Rough motion, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Because it was assurance bond, though, that was something.
Yeah, it wasn't a cash security held by the treasurer.
Charlie Raleigh, May 2019 invoice.
One more item before that, Joe.
Is it?
The Highlands, Oakland Island.
Oh, okay, I missed it, I'm sorry. Report from Charlie Raleigh regarding Oakway Highland complaint.
Based on the information that came to me by email from Evan, when I was down here last Thursday, on other business, I took a ride through Oakway Highlands. I'm aware that there were some concerns about the completion of the drainage area that's out next to Great Neck Road South and Blue Castle Drive, so I looked at that. While I was there, I dug some, four inspection holes in the loam that's there to see what the depth of the loam was in three or four different places. Two out of the four places, there had seen to be four inches plus, couple of the other places that I dug was less than four, and the grass was minimal at best, probably with a little bit of heat and no rain, it probably would dry right up and would be dead in a matter of a week or two. I think those areas that are very, very thinly seeded need to be brought up a little bit with a little bit more loam spread out over those areas, and the area should be hydroceded. The shoulders were hydroceded, and some of the other areas around it were. Why they couldn't have hydroceded the whole thing again, I don't know, but it needs that. And at one point, I had discussed with the contractor, cutting off the drainage pipe that extends into the drainage area from the stone culvert, and asking that he cut that off so it was flush with the slope, that hasn't been done, and there needs to be some four to six inch chipstone put at the lower end of the paved waterway that goes into that area, that hasn't been done yet. So, there's some little things that needs to be done in order to really complete that section. I went on beyond that, up onto Blue Castle Drive, the area that was rebuilt with the gravel or the reclaimed material seems to be holding up quite well, they have cut the shoulders back, and those were hydroceded, and the two large drainage areas that are on Carriage Drive have been reshaped, reseeded, and in some places, jutinetting has been put down to stabilize the soil, and the grass seems to be coming up pretty good there. So, we've made some progress, but that one drainage area, the small one that's out next to Great Neck Road South, needs a little bit of attention, it wouldn't take much to finish it up and be done with it.
So, should we send them a letter, then you talked to the contractor?
I had a call from him probably three weeks ago, saying that they was working on it. If you want, I can contact him and make an appointment to meet him there, and we can go over those things and get it finished up.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea, I think, right?
If you want me to do that, I'll contact him tomorrow and see where we can meet, maybe next week, get it done.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
We don't have to make a motion on that, now we just do it, Joe.
Sure, can do that.
Someone want to speak in the background, the point?
I've got questions for us all. Ernie?
Come up to the microphone. It has been quite a while, weeks, months, years, and in front of our home, and we understand that's part of the private road area, but the front of our home is disgusting, it's a disgusting mess. We work very hard, my wife and I, and especially my wife, she's a retired florist, she, take a ride and look at what she's done in her yard, and then take a look at that disgusting mess that's been left in front of our home. My complaints are a few. And Mr. Raleigh pointed out, and I'd like you to understand, if I may approach with some pitches, may I do that, Mr., you now chairman, my approach?
Sure.
This series of pitches, I want you to look at what happens to a runoff that's incompleted incorrectly.
You're gonna take the mic, Ernie?
I got it.
You can hold it.
I want you to look at a runoff.
Is this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, as I said, incompleted incorrectly, and not the proper amount of material, as Mr. Raleigh stated, chipstone, after it's built in a heavy rain, and a pouring and a driving and a heavy wind and rain, destroys the area, it's gone. And where does all that siltation and all that material go? Into the system that was built there to capture the water. It can't capture the water anymore. I have a video that I've never showed you that I'm saving, because this system fills up with water, comes across my driveway, and into my garage, and heads for my cellar. That's how bad it is, and I've got a video standing in my garage. Also, you can see, this placement, full replacement of stone, incorrect stone, not the right size chipstone, is simply not working properly. You can see my wife's nice yard there, you can see we used to have grass here, and you can see it here, in my driveways. He never put back the three-quarter inch stone that was removed, replaced, we still have that, over a five-inch blacktop that drops down to our stone to go in and out of both our driveways. Stone's never been replaced properly, up to grade. That's to try and give you an idea of that image right there, this is all sand, no more stone here, the stone driveway, there's the edge of that asphalt. Think this is easy, it's 75 years old, I gotta come in here. This is a much larger drawing of real chipstone, that's big stone, it's not that big, that's required, that's chipstone, it's put around the culvert, not in front of a culvert, not below a culvert, around the culvert, not work, this work was not done also. Non-compliance, continuous non-compliance. Fractured stone, needs to be replaced properly, at the right width, the right depth, the right distance. I often wondered if the groundwater elevation was confirmed prior to the placement of work there, and if enough stone was ever put in properly, that's in Section 11 of the plans. In the plans, page 9 of 11, 12 inches, 50 inches of loam, 50% loam, 50% sand mix, 1% loam, dirt, and maybe a little bit of sand, that's what I got for a, a place with just dead grass, dead brown-yellow grass. We had thought there would be some water-type vegetation, water-absorbent type vegetation, which we would take care of, so it would look nice, and not have this miserable, ugly mess in front of our beautiful home. Look across the street at my neighbor's home, I have it in a picture here, that's what our yard looks like, should look like, and would look like. And as Charlie mentioned, the culvert, it's a, I'm sorry, I gotta show you this again, Beautiful piece of black pipe, huh? I'm sorry. Right there. Yeah, that's really, real attractive, nice piece of cheap black pipe, not placed properly, not enclosed in concrete, disgusting mess. I don't know if, if I can continue coming and trying to get this developer, please, pay attention, get it right, and get it over. My wife actually wanted to attend tonight, and I really didn't want her to, because I didn't need her to go through yet another session because of this developer. And I am going forward to stop, hopefully, with my neighbors, the placement of a sign at the intersection of our road, it's not where the development is, development's well over 1,000 feet up the road. Hopefully, the board of selectmen will understand that. My wife and I probably understand that, we're gonna be the ones ending up taking care of this mess. of this mess. Hopefully, we can get a lot of things resolved and a lot of things in place properly, and a much better-looking piece of property agreed that it's part of a development, not part of a development, part of a private road, and we would end up probably taking care of it. We'd at least need to get to the point, or it ends up being a nice piece of property again. I simply don't have anything else to say, and I don't think I'm gonna be able to come back again. It's just too much on me. Thank you.
I think if we, Charlie, could you take a look at this and?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. Mr. Vigilio asked about the groundwater elevation. Yeah, it was checked. The day that they put in, they were going to put in a standard leaching pit in that drainage area. They're in the process of doing it, and I had them check when we saw that there was water at the bottom of the excavation. So we made a field change into a galley system, which is shallower, so we could bring it up, and basically made the same surface area, in same area for collecting the water, when it wasn't as deep. So we were able to keep the bottom of the system above the groundwater that was there. I would like to check the plans because I don't remember whether or not it called for a head wall on that pipe or not. I recall talking about it one day when they were installing the pipe, about cutting it off so it was with the slope and not just projecting out as a piece of pipe, that it would sort of form to the slope. So let me check that on the plan, just to be sure.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yeah.
Was it possibly conformed to the slope and erosion caused the pipes to expose?
No, no, I don't believe so, because it's a fairly shallow slope there. The grass has taken to some degree, not to the extent that I'm sure that Mr. Vigilio wants to see it, and it isn't really complete. They did some hydroseeding, but I don't recall that they did anything around that pipe. But all they have to do is cut it off on a bevel so that it is the same shape as the slope, and it'll be less obvious that there's a pipe there. But I need to check the plan to see if in the approved plan it called for a head wall. I don't recall that it did, but let me check that.
It does, Charlie, not to, but you will visit the plan and you will see that there is a definite head end there.
Let me check.
Covered type end.
Let me check and see.
That's drawn in the plan.
Was it called for a flat end, Ernie?
It looks like a small covered end.
Which would be like a splayed?
Looks like a concrete covered end, yeah.
Like a splayed?
Yeah.
Splayed end?
Yeah.
Rather than, rather than a head wall? You're not talking a head wall?
It looks like it had a small head wall in it. While you look at it.
Let me check it out for you, because I don't have the plan in front of me and I don't remember.
To me, it would, you know, it seemed that that's what it would be with my years of experience, but, and as far as, you know, there's a lot of other rules in here, and I don't know how those are ever gonna be handled. Because the placement of what has taken, what has taken place so far, there has been no, as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion, proper work done in placement. Never mind what it says about after placement, the cutting, the fertilizing, the watering, the material that should have been used to hold down the seed and the loam until it grow, grow properly. That's all in here.
I went by it today because I saw this on the agenda, and you can clearly see that it, the rain, any rain is washing, there's no areas holding up. You can see that there's a lot of silt around, where there's not drainage, and then there's, a lot of it drains right into his property. So I understand what he's talking about. The drainage is not right.
Yeah. We'll take a look at it and see.
If you don't stay in the head of a project like this, you can't, you never will get grass, you never will get it properly, and you never will keep the grades. The loam and seed, hydroseed, which he did not do the first time, and I have no idea what kind of seed it was, will not stay in place unless you work quickly to provide that. Roll-in-place loam and seed, water, water. Use the material, which it states in here, to hold it down properly till it grows. Oh, it's never gonna happen.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you.
I'm new to the board, so is there any avenue for the board can take to help the situation?
No, we just have to send Charlie out to do inspection, then we, Charlie, talk to the developer and say, hey, you gotta do this, and then we can have him come into the board, and we can say to him, have you done that work that Charlie recommended in Mr. Vigilio's concerns? If not, I don't know what we could, we could put a fine on him or?
Well, Joe, just can I also point out some background for the new members? Recently, the board took up a modification of the cluster subdivision, which is a special permit, to institute some timelines for construction, line items that had been incomplete, which was ultimately approved by the board, and the developer has been working towards compliance with that modification. And he has since been back following that modification of the special permit and entered into what's called the tripartite agreement between the planning board and the developer and his bank. And this acts as long as performance guarantee that the developer will meet his obligations according to the approved plan, and his lots have then been released from the covenants in place when, and so, as an enforcement capability is marginal or limited. The mechanism the board currently has in place is to say, you're not doing your job. We are going to access the funds that you've given us the right to access if you default in that obligation, and we'll do the work. But I think the best-case scenario, given the regulations of this board and the agreement entered into with the developer, is to have Charlie consult with the developer, identify the issues, see if it can be resolved, because this board's mechanism to ameliorate and mitigate the problem is to access the board's rights under that tripartite agreement to take the funds and complete the work according to the plan.
Yeah, just one other comment on that respect, from what Evan is saying. It is under a special permit, remember, because it's a cluster subdivision? And the construction of the drainage on Blue Castle was a part of the approval process for the lots that have been released. So you still have the terms of the special permit to deal with, and you could vote, if you don't get action on it, to ask the developer to come in, because he would be in violation of his terms of his special permit, if he doesn't really do the performance on that area that he's supposed to do. So with the board's approval, I'll make contact with Mr. Moran and meet him out there and tell him what Mr. Vigilio's issues are, and we'll check that area again and see if there are missing details. If there are, he has to do it.
Okay.
I'm guessing we can set definitive benchmarks that he has to meet this or?
So the modification of the special permit set those benchmarks? Generally, we don't set construction timelines in special permits because construction often changes and change orders happen. With that being said, there were?
Yeah, but this was roadway layout. This was done before.
There were clear issues, and based on a lot of feedback from the neighbors in the area, and reports from the consulting engineer, the board modified the special permit to set those deadlines, and the developer is well aware of those. So I know we've identified progress, but there's still some lapses in the developer's obligation to meet the specifications of the approved subdivision plan.
So if he hasn't met those deadlines, then you can reiterate that to him when you meet with him?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
My concern, besides the aesthetics of getting the job done right to the neighborhood, bringing it back the way it was, it's the long-term effect. When you have silt spilling into your drain, drainage area, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna drain water.
Right.
Is part of your recommendation is to go in and clean out those silted areas?
One of the things I put in, I believe one of the last letters that I wrote, was that those catch basins or leaching pits would be inspected to be sure that the inside didn't have evidence of silt buildup. You can tell if that takes place. When you remove the cover and you shine a light inside, if you see the sidewalls of the concrete structures with sediment up on them, you know that there's been a certain amount of contamination of the stone. And once the stone gets full of sediment, it doesn't drain. So that's something that I had asked for in one of the last inspections that I did, and a report that I gave to the board with respect to the security that was posted. So it's there in writing.
It's on the table.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you, Ernie.
Okay.
Charlie.
Next item, Charlie Rowley's invoice. Services for the month of May 2019. Pending at one regular meeting, $195. Inspection's May 8. Country Club Lane, caution inspection of drainage facilities and road-based material. Gave approval of, approval of fine grading after telephone conversation with Ken Mas Masters. Intersection with Old Barnstable Road to be left until details completed with town. One hour, $100. April 1, Catulitzolo. Final inspection and recommendation for release of security for completion of construction. One hour, $100. Plan review, May 7. Habitat for Humanity. Plan for two lot subdivision on Great Neck Road North. Prepare summary and letter to planning board with copy to ZBA. Two hours, 200. May 30, Habitat for Humanity. Discussion at planning meeting on plans to be revised with project engineer. Submitted letter detailing meeting. One hour, 100. Total amount due, $295.
$695, Joe.
Yeah.
$695. Oh, excuse me. I didn't want to cheat you, Charlie.
One other thing, note, if I may, I'm noting that there were two invoices submitted by Charlie this month. One is, that is accurate. It's not included in your packet and should have been. Charlie conducts inspections at Southport for completion of the ways at Southport. He provided an invoice that is paid a little bit differently for those inspections. He provides us notice that he's done the work and sends us the invoice. The planning department transmits that invoice to Southport, who remits a check to the town and then cuts a check to Charlie. But I still need the planning board's approval on that invoice, and the invoice was for $100. So two invoices received from Charlie Rowley for those services, one in the amount of $695, and one in the amount of $100 for services at Southport.
Just for the board's information, I had a request from the site contractor to inspect driveways on Atlantic Court. It's the last little piece of construction that's still underway. So I went and made those inspections. It's part of the procedure that we've carried through basically the entire portion of Southport. Driveway inspections, make sure that the base material is of the proper thickness and the quality of material before they put the pavement down.
Does that report go to them or does it go to us?
Excuse me?
Does that report go to them or does it go to us?
It goes directly to the board as a part of the invoice. Then they get the invoice copy to pay from.
Charlie's invoice reflected that he provided the service and that the material he inspected was adequate.
It's unique to Southport in this particular case. It's the only billing outside of what you see here that goes directly to the developer.
So would that be one invoice?
So I would need two motions, one to approve the $695 and one to approve the $100.
Most repaid Charlie for the first invoice for $695. We do one at a time.
Yep.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then an additional motion for $100 for services at Southport.
$100 to pay Charles Rowley for his service.
Do I have a second?
Southport.
For Southport.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One?
Go here, go second, third one, whatever you want to. Right here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under whole business, release of covenant request for Evergreen Circle subdivision.
Thank you.
Good evening. Attorney Jeff Ford here, representing Evergreen Energy LLC, who are the owners of Evergreen Circle subdivision. And together with me are Mark and Peter Javoni, who are two of the owners of the property. As indicated, this is a continued meeting for a release of covenant request for Evergreen Circle. At your last meeting, there was four major issues that needed to be addressed. The first being the paving of the road needed to be completed. That has now been done, and all paving's been completed at the site, so we can report that to the board. The second was the grass along the shoulders of the road. Still needed to be established. It hadn't grown enough. We've got some pictures here tonight. We think that it's quite established at this point, and it's come in very nicely. We feel we've satisfied that request. I can pass these pictures around if helpful?
Sure.
I was told those pictures were taken today.
Yeah.
Charlie drove by.
Would you like me to keep going?
Please.
Sure. So the third request was that the applicant needed to go to Conservation to seek approval of their remediation plan. I can report that they've gone. On May 23, 2019, they obtained a unanimous approval. Conservation voted to approve the plan and accept the deed. So that has also been satisfied. I know that was another, another one of the questions at the last meeting. And the last thing was, it's the next item on your agenda, I don't know if you want to take it altogether, was the sign.
Well, if, I think it prudent just to follow the agenda and stick with the release of the lots in particular, and then we can have the board discuss the design. And Joe, who's sitting in his chair, sat on the design review committee, can provide a report to the board on that item. Joe, if I may, there's a couple of email correspondence from my fellow department heads that I just want to make the board aware of, if I may.
Sure.
I received an email given to me today by the DPW director, who has noted that the developer, Evergreen Circle LLC, or Evergreen Energy LLC, excuse me, for the above subdivision, in this case, the Evergreen Circle, has purchased street and stop signs for the above through DPW. The signs have been received, and DPW will be installing them within the next week. And then to the point with regard to the restoration plan, the conservation agent, Drew McManus, has, in an email written to me, that the Conservation Commission voted unanimously to approve the restoration plan for the impacts, the clearing of vegetation to the open space as part of the Evergreen Circle subdivision at 588 Main Street. Further, he notes that the commission endorsed a recommendation by attorney Michael Ford for the gifting of this open space to the Conservation Commission, as opposed to having a conservation restriction on the property.
Okay. I had one question. Yeah, the lawn, the hydroseeding looks great. I've been up there as well. That's going to be maintained through natural rain. There is no irrigation, or is there?
I don't believe so.
No, there's no irrigation.
Right, right. And next week, we're gonna get rain, so, yeah. I think it will take.
Get rid of the pollen, at least.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No, I went by. I went by those pretty good. They got the poll out of there. That's what I was concerned with.
I'm glad that's gone, too.
So, do we have a motion to release?
No, we, Charlie, Charlie.
Oh.
I made two inspections, one last Thursday when I was down, another one tonight before I came in. I had a discussion with Mr. Pastore about the loam and seed. The last time, it was just done, or just prior to when I had seen it. Tonight, when I looked at it, as you see in the photographs, the grass has come up pretty well. Couple of spaces in the drainage area that need a little bit of attention, but I don't think that it's important enough to hold up the security release, so long as they pay attention to it and make sure the grass is there. I had a question for him about the bounding. The bounding we have on the plans from Homes of McGrath saying that they were installed at the time I saw them last Thursday, I couldn't see every one because they had been covered with the loam and so forth. They've been exposed in the meantime. I saw them tonight. So, the only thing left is the sign that Catherine says she's gonna have installed. So, I recommend the release.
Yes, the true new board members. I'm good.
I'm satisfied.
I make a motion to release the covenant to, what's it called, Green Castle? Evergreen Circle subdivision.
To release lots A, B, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, shown on a plan entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan, Evergreen Circle, dated August 14th, 2017, and revised September 8th, 2017, September 13th, 2017, and November 20th, 2017. From the provisions of a covenant agreement dated 15 November 2017.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Before we vote, Joe, just for the record, I did discuss with Mr. Pastore the paving. I was not able to get down to see the tack coat, but he gave me photographs that showed that the existing binder course was tacked properly before they put the mix down. And the top course is there, too. I just want that for the record, that I did see that and the work was done properly.
Based on what Mr. Rowley said, is there any need to put anything in there about the thin areas of grass that they're being maintained? Or is it good enough for them that they're gonna take care of it?
I think they will maintain them.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
You could link that as a part of your vote, just that they, they're on record, you're being concerned that they do.
Yeah.
I have to put that into the motion, that they take care of the grass, make sure it grows.
Sure. I know they're paying attention to it.
Even if you have to get a water tank to come in to water it a couple of times, just so it catches.
So, do we have a second?
We do. A second, though?
Yeah.
Aye.
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 Same procedure as the previous release. Thank you.
All set?
Yes.
Evergreen Circle signage review.
The applicant had met this past week with the designer view committee on this item. For subdivision signage, the planning board has ultimate approval of the subdivision sign. There, I believe, is a sign easement on one of the lots fronting on Main Street, so the proposed location would to be, to be within that easement. I don't know what the vote at the designer view committee was, so I suppose Joe might report on that.
Yeah. Well, the recommendation of the design review committee was they thought the sign would look better in wood.
One thing to note is, we can't regulate their material palette. They're not in the historic district, so it could be a preference, but not a requirement of this body.
Yes, I realize that. Design review wanted the letters to be routed in wood. I admit, that was their preference. And that the 588, the sign location, would be a separate sign. But, like Evan says, those are recommendations.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
But nothing...
There was only, if, can I make one single recommendation on the design of the sign? That didn't come up in designer view committee. And it goes to the panels that are subservient to the primary sign. You'll see the primary sign where it reads Evergreen Industrial Park is a field of green with a gold leaf letter with the number displayed over it. I have no issue with that top panel. It's legible, it identifies the subdivision well, and you can clearly read the number. When you go to the subservient panels, that also are shown as a field of green. One of the primary design considerations when it comes to signage is legibility. I have concerns with the legibility with the continuous dark field of green, and I might just suggest to the board to not approve the panels as all dark green with the white font, but to actually make those, require those panels to be white with a darker font. And it also provides some versatility to your tenants and not have their logos or their business names hidden in a dark field of green.
And we would be fine with those being white or in a light color.
That sounds a good idea to me.
Again, I wasn't part of this project when it was first going through, and I have one question here with regards to, separate from the sign. 588, so that's the property address for that entire development. How's the rest of it gonna be numbered? How's the rest of the units gonna be numbered going down that road?
So, we've got A and B, and then 1 through 9. So, A and B are the front two lots, and then it's 1 through 9 after that.
This already went through clay, like that?
Actually, no. So, I, the lots are A, B, and 1 through 9, but they're actually, I believe, 11...
11 Evergreen Circle.
Yeah, so they're, each address, each lot created as a result of the subdivision has a numbered address on Evergreen Circle.
So, for purpose of 911, it'd be 11 Evergreen Circle versus 588 Main Street?
If there was an emergency at the lot fronting on Main Street that was created as part of the subdivision, you'd be responding to 11 Evergreen Circle.
Okay.
It's general, for a monument sign such as this, it's very...
Well, because there's nothing there yet, so you need an address to go to. I understand that.
It's a very typical design element for a monument sign to read a business name, for example, and the numbered address. But with that being said, this is, this is signifying the location of the subdivision and the businesses that are within the commercial industrial park. And it's not the 588, if there would be confusion for emergency response. It's not a required design criteria.
No, I understand.
And it could be...
Evergreen Circle's not on the GPS. If someone punches in 11 Evergreen, it's not gonna show up on the GPS, but 588 Main Street will. So, I understand it. So, I was just curious about that.
Okay.
Now, that's, that's, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment, if I could. I'm not familiar with the exact location of where this will be at the intersection, but with the size of the sign and the fact that it looks like the bottom sign boards are gonna be very close to the ground, you'd wanna be sure that the sign was set back far enough so that when you were out at the intersection, you weren't blocking your site distance in either direction onto Route 130.
One of the requirements I know at designer view was that Homes of McGrath show a five-foot setback. I guess it wasn't showing that before, so they've added that on to the plan. And we have copies, if you'd like us to submit some.
Can you point where it's on the site, where it's on the plan?
It's fine.
Oh, here we go. Okay, so there it is right there. Yep, no problem.
There are no, so there's no signatory line on this plan, but since the planning board's gonna be the ultimate authority, and we've done this with Knockabout, I might suggest that the board sign this, and I'll put an approved seal on it, if that's the notion of the board, and we'll enter this to the record if that's amenable. Actually, we would need a revised plan with the, with different panels if the board votes that way, if that's okay.
Showing the light.
It appears that the sign is far enough back from the line of travel that it shouldn't be an obstruction. So long as there's no vegetation that will obscure it, it'd be fine.
In terms of the smaller signs, I know a lighter color is desired. Could it be something other than just white? Just a lighter, another light color, or...
I would, I would suggest that the board could choose a lighter neutral and that they remain consistent between the panels. I don't think it would be preferable from just a general design standard to have even a mixture of shades on the side and panels, just for legibility purposes for passersby. So, I would recommend to the board that they, that they have the, make the panels white panels.
Right, yeah.
A light color, not just white, but a light...
I would have them adhere to the color of your, the posts, the vinyl posts there on the white. Just make them consistent with that. And then the font or the lettering on those could be, could be dark, and there could be some versatility there. It could be more dynamic, but it would, it would read much better from the roadway.
I have a question. It's gonna be, the bottom sign's gonna be about 15 inches off the ground. I don't, this is a eight-foot pole? So, it's really gonna be like a 12-foot pole, and you're gonna put it in?
We have to stay within the guidelines of weight, 15 for the whole signs.
But the bottom two signs, if you don't cut the grass, if the weeds growing on that grow there...
Correct.
About 15 inches ain't very high. It's gonna block them.
They're gonna maintain the grass, really? They're gonna maintain the grass, more or less?
Yeah.
Can you maintain the grass?
The tenant's gonna say more about that.
No, I'm just thinking, you know.
And just for record, this is non-illuminated, right?
It's not illuminated, no. I was told by the board, if we decide to illuminate, we have to go back and find the building.
Close to the neighborhood across the street.
Yeah, no, that'll work fine.
Do we have a motion on the changes?
I make a motion, we accept the sign, but with the changes on the...
Panels?
The panels to be all white, and whatever letters you wanna put on them, make sure they're darker, though, so they stick out.
One question to the board, and I don't think this, I think, the question may come up, would, as tenants occupy lots and building permits get issued, I wouldn't think it would be required of the applicant to return to the board, to have each individual panel approved, but I just wanted to, I, I don't, as long as the field is defined, the background and the text color, you're not gonna have any individual panel that's gonna impact the streetscape. So, I would, I would recommend not requiring the applicant return for individual panels. So, that could be a part of the motion.
No, well, this is within our requirement.
Yeah.
Understood. But as this is the ultimate approving authority for the subdivision sign, that could be a condition you might want to set. I wouldn't advise that you set that condition on the applicant, because it overly burdens him without much benefit.
The motion stands as it is.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
If you could just get me an updated plan and submit it to my office, that would be fine. The condition will be noted in the record. And the covenant release, when it's fully executed, I'll notify your office. I think if you record it, the registry.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Here's your photos back.
Petition for Habitat for Humanity on Cape Cod to divide an existing single lot located at 341 Great Neck Road North into two separate lots to construct a single-family home on each lot under MGL Chapter 40B, Section 20 to 23, and 76 CMR 56.00.
This item remains on the agenda for one reason. The ZBA already acted on this petition from the applicant to subdivide the lots, but the planning board was requested to provide comment by the zoning board of appeals. The planning board, at our last meeting, accepted a report from Charlie on his particular comments that the board voted on to submit to the zoning board of appeals. And Charlie, subsequent to the zoning board of appeals decision, met with the project proponents engineer to go over his comments, and ultimately came to an agreeable, came to terms on the basis of Charlie's report, and updated site plans were submitted to the zoning board of appeals. It remains on the agenda now, only because the board authorized payment to Charlie for the work he did with the applicant, and I thought it prudent that he report to the board what ultimately was decided. I wanna further note that the planning board's jurisdiction is, the jurisdiction to act on this particular petition was under the zoning board of appeals, and the planning board didn't have jurisdiction on this application. But because Charlie provided the report, I felt it important to stay on the agenda so he could tell you what you paid for his services for.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Why was it on there in the...
Joe may, yeah.
Joe, why, us being new, why was it on there in the first place if it's a zoning issue?
So, the...
I can answer that.
When I saw this on the agenda, because also I'm a department head, and I also get the ZBA announcements all the time, looking for reports. And in this case itself, I had some questions, and I reached out to the engineer of record for the project, not to Charlie, because that's the way you do it, because it's under the ZBA. So, when I saw this, I was curious as to why it's under the planning board. And then when I looked at the dates, we met, and this is already a planning board, this is already a ZBA agenda, and we met before the ZBA as an agenda item on this. And for me, it clouded the issue, because the ZBA has the rights to this, not us, and I don't understand why the planning board, or why we even had Charlie going down there as an engineer to review this site. Were you guys aware that he was...
Remastered that maybe.
No, I, we got an email at the very beginning of this when it first came in, because a copy of the application came to the planning board. And so, I emailed Mary back, with I think with a copy to Evan, and said, "Do you want me to review this plan?" They sent it, it came through the planning office. I said, "Do you want me to review it?" And she said, "Yes." So, I put some comments in there with respect to what was on the plan, and copied the ZBA at the same time.
So, the chairman asked you to review it?
Yes, she did.
I just don't understand why we're reviewing, using you to review a plan that's under someone else's jurisdiction.
Only, only because the type of the plan that it is...
Well, no, we do these all the time, though. That's what I'm curious about, because we have other ones in town as well. And they're not under the, they're not under the, of the planning board.
I can only ask, say that I asked her by email, "Mary, do you want me to review this or give some comments to the board?" And she said, "Yes." So, that's why I did.
I wanna just caution the board from my perspective, we're overstepping our bounds, and we risk the chance of clouding this issue with another board that has jurisdiction over it. And we may wanna be careful about this, because we don't have any jurisdiction, and we're hiring our engineer, and we're actually meeting about it prior to the ZBA meeting. It's a public meeting. We risk the chance of causing a problem, or clouding the issue, I think. So, I just had concerns when I read all this, because I had contacted the engineer for this project myself with regards to the roadway layout and access for fire apparatus, because I had concerns. Obviously, they're going to the ZBA for variance on that specific, because 527 CMR, which is the fire code, has no say in this. All one and two-family homes are exempt under 527 CMR, having the 20-foot roadway limit. The only thing, the only thing that had teeth in this is the town bylaw. So, the town bylaw only says 18 feet, it doesn't even say 20 feet. And so, the road, original roadway layout had 17 feet, so I called just to confirm this, because I wanted to ensure that my fire apparatus can meet the weight requirements of that to make it to the, because the other house was greater than 150 feet. That's what dictates a lot of this. The other house was 260 feet off of Great Neck. So, that, that's what generates the code with regards to access. So, that's why I called the engineer. But I'm just curious, I just, I just wanted to find out.
The ZBA had my letter on May 7th. I don't show when they met the first time.
They met after you, yeah.
So, they met after the letter?
Well, the, the problem is, we got involved before they met, and I, and that's... Well, the, the problem is, we got involved before they met, and I, and, and that's where my concern comes from, is we don't have any say in this. This is a ZBA issue. So I just, just wanted to be careful with that.
That's why I copied the ZBA, to be sure that they had the information. They could, they could either take the information or ignore it if they wanted to.
And, and, and nothing, I, I love your opinion, but the, the thing is, we're paying you to do something that has no relevance on what they make a decision on. It's great that they accepted it, and it sees that they did accept your, your information, which is great. They didn't say anything about the roadway width, though, did they? Or you didn't?
I remember Joe asked me about it, and I thought that the fifteen feet was adequate. It would be the same as if it was a driveway.
I thought we, I spoke to him, said, I thought it originally said seventeen feet.
That includes the berm.
Okay.
It's seventeen feet from the outside of berm to outside of berm, but the actual driving surface is fifteen. If you didn't have the second lot, it would be just like a standard driveway, and even a standard driveway probably isn't paved more than twelve.
Oh, no, the standard driveway is no, it's the hundred and fifty foot that plays a role. And there's a second lot, so we can't say if, without the second lot, because the second lot does exist, and that house is two hundred and sixty feet away from the, the father's point, it's away from Great Neck. So that's what kicks in the town bylaw, and that's why I'm in the ZBA to begin with, because they need to get a variance from the town bylaw to do that. So my concern was the construction of their roadway. That's why I spoke directly with their engineer, that it could withstand the weight of our, of our apparatus. And so I was assured with that. And so they, we had a good conversation. I was just curious as to how we got involved in something that's not on our jurisdiction.
Only because I asked the question.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And I was given the, the go-ahead to do it with a copy to make sure that the ZBA had the information.
I just didn't want it to scope us step out of bounds.
If I can, can I respond to Jack's comments quickly? Chapter 40B grants the authority for this type of project to the zoning board of appeals, but the statute also allows, or requests that the zoning board of appeals request comment from a variety of boards. And I think that's what Charlie was doing at the request of the chair, was providing comment. And I think if I'm hearing Jack's concern, and it's, it's well noted, and I noted the same, is that when you have a duly advertised public hearing in another regulatory body, we can provide the comment in writing to the zoning board of appeals without deliberating on the project prior to be opening by another regulatory body because it introduces bias. And I think if that's your concern.
That's what my concern was.
It's noted, and we should avoid it in the future.
We're talking about an open meeting, we just didn't want to do a letter. Well, no, it, you know.
Okay.
It only makes sense.
The point well taken.
Spend the money, you know, you shouldn't have.
Well, I just didn't wanna cloud it on them.
So I, it's, it remains on the agenda, because Charlie reported to their engineer, and we authorized payment to him today for that work, so I felt he should respond to the planning board on.
Did you provide a copy to the board on, on my comments from the meeting we had with?
Well, I don't know if they have that email.
Okay. Well, I, just to give you a summary, last Thursday? No.
New, update.
That's a new one.
Is that May 30th?
No, this is, uh.
May 30th.
May 30th, yes.
Okay, that's, I got, after we had that discussion, I got a follow-up email from the engineer with the revisions that he made on the plan, and he wanted me to check and make sure it was consistent with that letter. So on the 4th of June, I wrote back to him, and I said, "Would you make some small adjustments in the site plan? First was drop the elevation of the catch basin down about a foot, because I didn't feel there was enough separation between the pipe and the frame and grate to where you could get it in there with the structure that they were gonna use. Also seal the casting to the riser with cement concrete, mortar the pipe in both inside and out the structure." And I said, "Everything else on the plan looked fine. On the lot plan, we had agreed that there would be four concrete bounds set. Two were identified the street, two were identified the division of the lots. They weren't on the plan, so I made a note of that." And then I said, "Have you discussed the covenant issue with your client, because the subdivision plan said it was subject to a covenant? Typically, that's an arrangement that, like the document that you released tonight, that you don't get a building permit until either the road is completed or you put down security." So I didn't know the answer to that. I don't know whether the, they've discussed that. So I said, "If there was, to at least put a note on the plan saying that the subdivision is subject to the covenant to be recorded here with, to go on the plan." Then the third thing I put in there was, "For emergency call purposes, you will probably need to assign a name to the street, set up a names, a street sign. The name will have to pass muster with Mashpee Fire and Rescue, label it on the plan." And then I said the rest of the plan was okay.
Yeah.
That's what they have for information.
We defer to clay anyway.
And that went to, also to the board of appeals, to Jonathan Furbush. I did get an email from him indicating he was happy to get the information, so.
It was more like a courtesy thing that we did then.
Well, yeah, no, I, I see it. I just, I was worried that we're jumping in a pool. We should be careful.
We all set?
Yep.
There's no action needed on this. It's just a report, right?
It's just a report, only, it, it remains on the agenda, because again, Charlie was, was authorized to follow up their engineer and, and had done so following our last meeting.
Thanks, Joe.
So the decision has been rendered by the zoning board of appeals, though.
Thank you.
Come on up. Ron Vaughn, D member of the board of appeals, I take most of the motions on the board, so, but I wanna thank the board, certainly will thank Charlie for all his help and input. Well done. And I wanna say to Jack, very well pointed out, our board was a little concerned about where this was headed, actually very concerned. I'm here tonight, not, I guess representing the board, I was asked to attend just to understand why it was on the agenda. I understand why it's on the agenda. And you are correct, even Evan, that in fact, we welcome input from other boards and communities from all over, from, from, you know, the community, right? We wanna hear from them. But in fact, it is our permit, so we felt that we were gonna handle it well, and we feel that we did handle it well. But again, Charlie, I thank you very much for your input. I think it was very well handled, so.
I just, I don't think the board was trying to overstep their boundary. I think they were just trying to give you some assistance on this thing.
Yeah, and I, I, well, so I can't speak for the board, I'm only speaking for myself.
I don't wanna make a mountain out of molehills.
And I, and the board doesn't wanna do that. We see something, though, on an agenda that we felt that was maybe going down that road, then I, there's a phone call made, and I was available and others weren't available. So while others were available, maybe they've been here too, but, you know, Jack's bringing up something that the board members were concerned about frankly, and, and it's, you know, it's something that would be, you know, that's of concern. So I think it was well handled at the end, and I think the comments that were made here tonight makes total sense. So I thank the board very much, and Charlie, well done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Road taking policies and procedures.
You should have a draft in your packet.
Yeah.
Fairly certain Patty put it in there.
From the select.
Yeah, right here.
Yes, the, at your last meeting, the chair had noted that there was a working draft of road taking policies and procedures that the board had worked on with town council and the board selectmen's office, and ultimately it never became an active selectmen's policy. The board had asked me to dig it out, which I did, send it to Charlie, the chair and the rest of the board, so that we could go over the language as it sits, make recommendations, and, and submit to the board selectmen and request that if you made a formal policy. And I know Charlie has some comments to be made on the draft as it sits.
All right, so what do you want to do? Do you want to read each one and then comment on it?
Um, well, I, that would take a while. I, I would suggest the, I would suggest Charlie provide a report in his comments, and and if the board has further comments or something to add, we can include that as comments and amend that draft so that the selectman at a time certain in the future can enact that as a formal policy.
Do you have my email of June 3rd? Is that part of your?
I don't know if it is, Charlie.
I can go through it with you. There's only a few items, anyway.
No.
No? Okay.
No.
I'll give you one. I had one comment on paragraph one, where it says that the, well, actually, the fourth line from the bottom in that first paragraph, it says, "Such layout plans should be prepared by a licensed engineer." Engineers and surveyors are very sensitive about that kind of language. Licensed professional land surveyors are the only ones that can lay out streets and ways, because they identify property boundaries. We're not involved with drainage, we're not involved with road design, we're involved with the property boundaries between the lot layout, the lots themselves, and the street lines. So I'm just suggesting that it be changed to a licensed land surveyor instead of licensed That all comes through Mass General Laws, Chapter 112, which is our registration laws. I suggested in, in paragraph number two, that maybe it be separated out into two paragraphs, because it talks about initially the acceptance of new subdivision ways. In other words, if someone comes in with an application for a subdivision before the board, the board grants its approval, and it remains a private way until such time as they come before the board of selectmen with a petition to make it a public way or a town way. And it's at that time that you begin to see the plans come in for the acceptance. So you may want to consider establishing something in your subdivision rules and regulations about a procedure, if you want to do that. It isn't absolutely necessary, but if you want to do it under your subdivision control law, you might wanna make reference to that in the rules and regulations, and it would require advertising and public hearing. It does not go before the town for vote. You as a board, take care of it right here in-house. You don't have to get town meeting approval, it's strictly up to the planning board rules and regulations to set that change. But I would suggest that any other, where it says in the last of the paragraph, "Plans for the conversion of existing private ways to public ways shall be prepared by the town in accordance with General Laws bylaw 157C." Well, that's good, but I think it would be good to separate that out into a separate paragraph, so it's not confusing with respect to subdivisions. They're two different animals.
Yeah, I agree with you.
The next thing is just paragraph number five, three and four, I didn't have any problem with. We had run this through, I think maybe three or four years ago, while Tom was still here. So much of this I recognize from before. But paragraph five, where it says, "All layout plans for proposed public ways in the town will provide a minimum roadway width of blank feet." That doesn't talk about the pavement width, it talks about the layout width. That's okay. If you want to establish a minimum width for the layout, that's all right, except when you get into places like New Seaberry or some of the older developments within town, where maybe the layouts might have been thirty or thirty-five feet. If you establish a minimum of, say, forty feet, which is the minimum standard that is in your subdivision rules and regulations for typical subdivisions, then you would either have to modify that layout width for a private way that's less than that, or the town would have to enter into takings of the private property, which I don't think you probably wanna do. So you might say something to the effect, huh, what did I, okay. "Establishing a minimum width for the road layout would be difficult for existing ways if the layout width is less than forty feet and a minimum width of forty feet is set. If the town were to create a layout of a private way that is greater than what the old recorded plan might indicate, land takes will be involved. I recommend a standard width of forty feet, but with a provision that a width of lesser dimension might be allowed when certain circumstances dictate." So if somebody comes in with a petition for an old development that only had thirty-foot wide layouts, I know some of them at New Seaberry are less than forty, the older ones. Whether they'd ever come in, who knows, but there may be other places where people want a, a road laid out, but the layout is much less than that. It gives the town the option of, of either accepting a minimum width or not.
Can I just get a point of clarification? We're talking about roadway layout. We're talk, we're not talking about the paved surface. We're talking about the, the whole, the easements and everything, okay?
Whether it gets constructed or not becomes the purview of the DPW, and I know they do that under a separate regulation. This is strictly for the layout, so that the layout becomes a, a town entity before any construction takes place.
Yep.
Yeah.
That makes sense, 'cause like up at New Seaberry, I know this road's like twenty-eight feet.
I mean, the, the only challenge I see is, I wish the town bylaw mirrored 527 CMR and the twenty-four, because the town bylaw doesn't mirror that right now, and I'd love to see them get up to date.
I'm not familiar with that myself. Have you got a copy of it, Jack?
Of course I do.
Let me see? Okay.
I'll get your copy.
All right. I did make a suggestion with respect to having a layout plan conform to certain standards. We used to do that when, when my office prepared layout plans for the town of Wareham. You can do it or not do it, as you see fit. It's, it's not essential. The registry of deeds has a minimum standard. They'll plan dimensions, I think typically the minimum is eighteen by twenty-four, but a layout plan that's eighteen inches by thirty-six inches long typically is pretty good for a layout of a street, because you don't have any information other than drainage areas that might go outside the limits of a way that's two lines an inch apart, weaving its way across the sheet. So you could establish a standard, you could establish a standard title block, but then there are other things that need to be shown on the, on the plan, and that would be the date when the plan is submitted to the town clerk, the date when it's submitted to the planning board, a date when it is filed with the board of selectmen, and a date when the town meeting has actually approved it or accepted it. All of those should have a separate little block on the plan with a place for a signature and a date, so that there's no question, when somebody looks at the plan in the registry, they know that it actually is a layout. So that was essentially the extent of my comments. I did suggest something that some towns do. They adopt a regulation through the subdivision rules and regulations that say that the fee ownership of the street remains in the name of the developer when the lots are sold. The developer sells the lot with a specific statement, he is retaining full ownership of the street, but is conveying rights of access and egress to the new lot owner. That way, when the street is accepted by the town, it's only taking an easement from one individual, and that's the original developer, and not from multiple people throughout the development.
That makes better, huh?
Yeah.
That makes better sense.
Because if it's not spelled out in a deed, if, if I create a subdivision and Evergreen Circle, and I create, and I convey out Lot 11, and I say, "Lot 11 is shown on the plan of Evergreen Circle," and that's all I say, the ownership of that lot extends to the center of Evergreen Circle, subject to the rights of other people to, to go back and forth on it. But when it comes to a town taking, now the town has to make a taking against the owner of Lot 11.
Yeah.
Whereas if the original developer retained the actual ownership of the street and granted an easement for them to pass and repass, then when it comes down to make a taking by the town, they're only taking it against one individual, and that's the original owner.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
All right, on the street, say there's twenty houses.
Yep.
Now they have to get a vote, each person on that street.
I would assume that if it comes in by petition, yeah, yeah, that the majority of the people have to approve it.
But some people, I know, like my neighbor, one time, the older people didn't wanna pay their betterment for the street, so they voted it down at town meeting. But now if we leave it to a developer, at the end, he's gonna wanna turn it over, and each house is gonna get each lot.
Well, the petition.
An betterment for this?
The petition could still come from the owners of the lots.
All right.
And I think you would probably still need ownership because, or approval, because they have rights in that street. And whether they own it in fee or whether they own it as just an easement, they still have rights in it that they have to assent to.
I just don't want to let the people that live on that, you know, if it's a residential, they lose their power to say yes or no.
I, I don't think they would, Dennis, because in every conveyance, whether it's mentioned or it isn't, they have rights in that street, whether they own it or not.
You see what I mean, though?
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I, I think when a developer goes in, though, there is an betterment, because we're not asking the town to approve the road, the developer's doing it. So there is an betterment, because it's part of the original project. It's when he goes and redevelops, so there's something else going on, and they have to get a betterment. That's where, and like you said, it's a point well taken. You want the homeowner to still have a say in the solution.
They, they still would.
Okay.
And it, it's only something that some towns do, and what, what sound, some towns And it's only something that some towns do and what some towns do also is a part of the subdivision submittal. They say after the approval is done, okay, now submit the actual layout plan. And then it's all set to go for the town to accept it, but, you know, that's not essential. I mean, the way you do it now through Catherine's office and through the board of selectmen seems to work okay.
I'd like to ask the town planner, item eight on this list. Is that, is that time parameters? Those time parameters sufficient for us to do everything?
I think I've got another one here. Why don't you take that one?
What'd you say, Jack? I didn't hear.
On item eight, are those time parameters good enough for us to get what we need to get done?
The only comments I might have is for layout plans shall be submitted to the board of selectmen six weeks prior for review. It is enough time. I'm just trying to wonder, like for October, town meeting warrant articles and petitions have to be submitted by the first week in July. So after the submission of that warrant article, you would have, an engineer would have a certain amount of months to draw up the plan. Six weeks, if this board were to receive a drawn plan for review and comment six weeks prior to the selectmen's meeting, it would be perfectly adequate, only in that we don't need to hold public hearings on road takings. We just need to hold a, on the agenda, it has to be listed and the board would review and provide comment and a recommendation to town meeting, but six weeks is more than adequate. What I might suggest the board take action on tonight is to authorize me to redraft this policy, take into consideration the comments made by the consulting engineer, and keep this under old business for a future meeting to approve and submit to the board of selectmen.
You need that in a motion?
Yes, please. If it's amenable to the board.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we give eversemisses a draft up the new road layout policy.
Pursuant to the comments.
With the comments from Charlie.
And we'll keep it on a future agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Hold us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have?
Sorry.
Okay. Board members' reports. Cape Cod Commission.
We don't have a member.
One more, David. If, can I make one comment on that one, Joe, actually, for Cape Cod Commission? One Cape Summit registration is open. It's being held in the last weekend, or last week of July, I believe.
29th and 30th.
20th of July?
29th and 30th.
29th and 30th of July, so one Cape Summit. It's a great event. It's in Harwich at the Quasit Inn. It's beautiful. I would suggest the planning board attend if you have the time. If you would like to attend, register. You can register and have a, and suggest, or select payment by check and we can send members of the planning board under the planning board's budget to attend to this event, and I would strongly encourage that you do. I'll follow up in an email on the registration information.
Oh, good.
I know, I think I saw Rob last year. I know Mary was there last year. I attended. It's a really, it's a great event.
Yes. And I've taken action from, I just installed a new approved water filter under my sink.
All right.
To take out the PFOS and PFOs out of the water that's in our water system.
The fire department, isn't that what that foam is?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, the fire.
Want to look at the airport on that one?
Yeah.
You know, when I was a kid on 4th of July, they had the firefighters come down to the Sandwich 4th of July parade and they'd load up a field with the foam and the kids are jumping around in that stuff. I'm eating it, you know? Probably not a good idea.
I'll bet you didn't eat the protein foam.
Well, the protein foam was used to be, was made out of fish guts and that stuff stunk.
It definitely didn't, was not, it tasted like soap is what it was, like soap.
I thought the filter was like a carbon filter, was it? It is.
That's what's wrong with me.
The, it's a Culligan filter, the only one approved by, what's the organization, SEEP or SEEK or, it is a acronym for the organization that's really out there and will be presenting at this one Cape as well.
And they don't have good speakers, too.
Reverse osmosis one is probably a step above what I just installed, but it's.
Yeah, and the website went online this weekend and I signed up already.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so I'll send you the link. Notify me if you'd like to register and we'll get all the records. Because I'll need to come back to the board to authorize the funds to send you. So just let me know so I can prepare that documentation for a future meeting.
But you said by check. Typically, I do it online, but.
So the town doesn't like to reimburse.
Okay.
But we have, the planning board has a budget item for dues, memberships, professional development opportunities, things like that. And I think if the board were to authorize that, the expense under those line items would be a perfectly suitable use of the funds, and I just want to know so I can prepare the documentation for the next meeting.
It gave me two options when I signed up two days ago. So you can either pay by PayPal or pay by check. And what it does, it gives me, because it says by check because you're getting a purchase order from a town.
My point is.
So it gives me an invoice that I can submit to.
Yeah, my point is, you can have, pay out of your pocket by all means. The town just won't be able to reimburse you for the funds. But we can pay for you if you just notify me first.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm planning on attending.
Very good.
Okay. Community Preservation Committee?
Mary's not here.
That's Mary. Design Review, well, we had Evergreen Industrial Park are already here. Aquay Highlands had some signs and there were some minor changes.
To know on Aquay Highlands, the developer proposed signage to put at the, Ernie actually mentioned it briefly tonight.
Yeah.
To put within the town's, the road layout of Great Neck Road South. And ultimately, the board of selectmen need to approve that. The planning board doesn't have any jurisdiction to approve a subdivision sign outside of the development. So I suggested to Mr. Moore, and I think Design Review Committee made the same suggestion that he needs to, if he is to construct signage, it can only be by action of the board of selectmen. So he's aware of that and we'll see what happens.
Okay. Plan Review?
Plan Review met just the other day and looked at a development of Contractor Base at 31 Mercantile Way. It was pretty standard site plan. It was approved with a few conditions, but nothing major. The short side of the building was displayed on the street. Parking was adequate. No parking was in the front of the building.